Hey, Fort Block, I call the Board of the Regularly Scheduled City Council. This time I'd like to ask everyone to please stand and observe a moment of prayer. Yes, please.
Come on the south of the misforte here with.
Thank you. Here this time I'd like to ask, uh, the city court, could she please come along?
Here.
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 Okay, we have the forum. This time I'd like to brief item number four on the agenda which is consideration of the minutes of the regularly scheduled meeting, the whole meeting which was held on January ninth of twenty twenty-three, and also the minutes of the regularly scheduled city council meeting, also held on January ninth of twenty twenty-three. We implore motion to approve the minutes.
No move.
I should be able to councilman joiners, they're second.
Second.
Second by councilman, was that Daughtry?
Daughtry.
Councilman Daughtry. Any need for discussion? Hearing none, all better, please say aye. All of those like sign. Minutes are now approved. This time I'd like to add, um, see if there are any additions or consideration additions or deductions from the agenda. I have a request that would win the closed session for personnel and economic development matter. Uh, are there any other items either to be added or to be removed? Hearing none, any motion to approve the, uh, uh, the agenda, new agenda?
Second.
Second.
Motion to be made by councilman, uh, Latch Daughtry, decided by councilman Jabaris Walker, is there a need for discussion? Hearing none, all better, please say aye. All of those like sign. I'll raise this to item number six on the agenda, which is the update from our city manager Keith Rogers, alternative seat, Mr. Rogers.
Thank you, mayor, good evening, everyone. Uh, coming up, the city of Rocky Mount has several events taking place. Uh, as you all are aware, Community Development and Fair Housing Month draws to a close, so the city will be hosting a homelessness roundtable from ten to eleven a.m. on Tuesday at the Environmental Services Complex on one-two-two-one Thorpe Road, and a representative from the North Carolina Coalition to End Homelessness will be there to facilitate a discussion with all of our local agencies and the community regarding homelessness in our area. Also, this week, we have a War Three community meeting. Councilman Jonah will host this meeting from six p.m. to seven-thirty p.m. this Thursday at Victory in Christ Ministry on twelve-hundred Old Wilson Road. Also, on Friday, the city's annual Arbor Day celebration will take place at ten a.m. at our Rocky Mount Historic Tree Park at nine-six-two Bethlehem Road. And then finally, the first Friday event will kick off downtown on May the fifth. So we will have various businesses that will be taking part, and there will be live music, games, and for additional details, please visit our downtown website, which is downtownrockymount.com. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Any comments or questions for me? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to presentation and recognitions. Proclamation from the city of Rocknow. Whereas public works is an honorable profession involving variety of challenging and rewarding careers, essential to efficient and effective operation of government. Whereas the efficiency of the dedicated skilled personnel staff in the public works or resources department is influenced by their attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Whereas these men and women contribute considerably to the quality of life of the citizens they serve, their commitment to the excellence in variety of skills are invaluable resource for providing the various services expected by our citizens. And whereas the public works infrastructure, facilities, and services are vitally important to sustaining communities and to the health, safety, and well-being of the people of the city of Rocknow to help out our communities grow and prosper. Whereas these public works facilities and services could not be provided to the community with half the dedicated efforts and unwavering committed commitment of the public works and water resources professionals responsible for planning, designing, building, operating, maintaining, and managing the transportation network, the stormwater system, the water supply, the water and wastewater treatment plants, the water and waste, water distribution and collection systems, maintenance of the city's motor vehicle and food fleet, and the delivery of solid-based services, which are essential services to the citizens, to our citizens. Whereas the public works, this public works week strives to inform all citizens about the quality of people in government who work tirelessly every day to strengthen the bond that keeps us all connected. Their commitment to high ethical standards and the value of services they perform, to encourage excellence among public employees, and to promote interest in civil service construction careers. And whereas this year's theme, connecting the world through public works, speaks to the essential nature of public work services in support of everyday quality of life. Now therefore, aye, as the mayor of the city of Rocky Mount, any right proclaim the week of May twenty-one and twenty-seven of twenty twenty-three is Public Works Week in the city of Rocky Mount. Mr. Kerr? Okay. This time, we receive public petitions. The public petition portion of the city council meeting is an opportunity for public comment, and the city council appreciates your attendance and thanks you for expressing your views and opinions. City council matters all citizen input, and this is an opportunity to raise a question or present a request to council. However, in most cases, council members will not respond to public comments, but may refer a matter to the city manager or staff to follow up. Time to be monitored or to give everyone an opportunity to speak, and speakers will have three minutes. Please be aware that signing sheets must be presented to the security officer prior to the opening of the city council meeting. And if the organized group is present to speak on a common issue, please designate one person to present the group's comments. If there are comments in regard to an item that is the subject of a public hearing, please wait until the item is introduced to speak. Time will also be monitored. If there are comments in regard to an evidence hearing, additional time may be granted. And the city council requests that you please adhere to the following guidelines. Complete signing sheet. Addressed comments to the council as the hall, with not individual council members or city staff. Speak from the podium in a civil, non-arguable and disrespectful manner. And personal attacks which have the potential to disrupt the meeting will not be tolerated if you are asked to sit down or remove from the meeting, and keep comments to free from this. This time I'd like to invite Mr. Wayne and Mr. Michael Wayne to the podium.
Good afternoon, mayor, Robinson, city councilman, city manager Rogers. My name is Michael Wayne, I'm a fire captain with our internationally accredited Class One rated fire department. I'm here today to speak on behalf of our members of the department regarding the current state of our salary and benefits. First, let me make clear that we fully support our brothers and sisters in blue at the police department and the recent thirty-six percent increase in starting salary. They work hard daily and put their lives on the line to protect the citizens of Rocky Mount. But so do we. We, the fire department, respond to the same dangerous shootings and stabbings caused at police department does. Just in the last calendar year, we have responded to sixty-three shootings alongside our police counterparts. For as long as any of us can remember, there has always been a gap in salary and benefits between police and fire. Additionally, our fire department's starting salary is no longer competitive with surrounding departments, many of which are smaller and than ours and are not accredited or have a Class One rating. In the past three and a half years, our department has lost twenty employees to those departments. They are paying more and have better benefits. These were not just brand-new employees. They were veterans employees, eight to ten years of experience that left us to take entry-level positions at other departments, making more than we do currently. Last week's bold move, announcing starting pay for new police officers with of the would-be sixty thousand dollars, was great for those officers and will surely help with the recruitment efforts to fill vacancies. It would equally help us in the same efforts. Currently, seventy-two percent of our fire department pays less than sixty thousand dollars. Seventy-two percent. Speaking for myself, I've been with the fire department for eighteen years, and I've been a supervisor for several of those years. It wasn't until this last pay-per-performance race that I myself went over sixty thousand dollars. And much like veteran members of our police force, we too suffer from compensation when salary ranges are adjusted to attract entry-level positions. Those compensation issues have been responsible for many of those twenty employees leaving in the past three and a half years. And our brothers in blue aren't the only ones operating with several vacant positions. Those twenty people who left us for higher pay created vacancies for us as well. But let me tell you about your fire department and how we adapt to situations such as that to ensure that we continue our mission, which is to protect lives and property through quality and excellence in service. Our department provided complete coverage and led the city's emergency management efforts during the COVID pandemic, all while having fifteen vacancies. We have never stopped running calls, and we never closed the fire station or took a fire truck out of service.
Thank you, Captain.
Thank you.
Please, all of them, thank you, please. I appreciate everybody's enthusiasm, but let's, uh, let's try to get through this if you don't mind. I'd like to invite Jeremy Wells to the podium.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Jeremy Wells, and I also am a fire captain of Rocky Mount Fire Department. I would like to reiterate that last week's announcement about increasing the starting pay for Rocky Mount Police Department and adjusting all P D employees accordingly was great news, and we are happy their efforts will be rewarded. I would also like to reiterate what Captain Wayne said, and that I too have been with Rocky Mount Fire Department for a long time. And as a supervisor, I make just a little over the sixty thousand dollars that those entry-level police officers will be now be making. Captain Wayne did an excellent job outlining some of the, some of the issues that our department has faced, yet we continue, yet we continue to provide top-notch fire and emergency services to our citizens. I'd like to share with you some of the things that your fire department does that many of you probably do not know. Rocky Mount Fire Department consistently leads the city's United Way efforts, contributing twenty-five percent of the city's overall campaign for the past two years that has been over twenty-three thousand dollars each year. Rocky Mount Fire Department consistently leads the Christmas aid efforts. Last year, we had one hundred percent of our employees contributed in this initiative to other, to help other city employees in their time of need. Over the past five years, our department has totalled over ninety-four hundred dollars towards that campaign. Our department consistently has one hundred percent participation by all of our employees by the City's Keep America Beautiful campaign every year. So even though we have never been paid for this, have this, and never have been paid or have the same benefits as our current partners at the police department, we have continued to support the city and do things that are not in our core job responsibilities. We have now implemented numerous call-saving and staff measures that have ensured our citizens provided protection of lives and property through quality and excellence in service, all with no compensation, no additional compensation. Many of us are now faced with big decisions of whether to seek employment elsewhere where we would be fairly compensated for our levels of training and expertise. We all came to Rocky Mount Fire Department with our, with, we would, we all came to Rocky Mount Fire Department thinking that we would first serve our full fire service career here and retire from here. But these recent gaps in salary and benefits have us all questioning if that is a wise choice. Those of you sitting at the table up here in front of me, you already know that, you are already aware that officers receive full-time retirement at twenty-five years while we work thirty. Additionally, they receive separation pay, which is a huge monetary benefit granted to them by the state legislation, but if the city puts the bill. Captain Wayne and I came here today on behalf of all men and women of Rocky Mount Fire Department to bring the things that we mentioned in attention to your, to you, and we ask that your parity, parity in pay and benefits for our police department counterparts. Lastly, I would like to say, I would like to ask that all of you in this room today that are supporting the fire department, please stand up. Thank you for your time, and thank you for allowing us to talk on this topic today.
Thank you. I'd like to invite Dr. Koo to the podium.
Good evening, my name is Dr. Koo. Rocky Mount is a microcosm of the larger United States. Whatever is happening out there is reflected here. I'll give you three examples. Number one, there's a death of democracy. We hear about deals that significantly impact us are made behind closed doors and without discussion or our consent, like the proposed twenty million dollar judicial center. Are we supposed to accept this after the fact? Reflected within the federal government is the same. The unrelenting drive to a global war without our consent. Most of us prefer to have our tax dollars spent to build infrastructure, fund public education, enable Medicare for all, help our cities build affordable housing, provide gainful employment, and stop hunger. No public consent was obtained for the constant warfare, cold, hot, hybrid sanctions or blockades. I was never asked to vote on this. And instead of being more concerned with rising poverty, the mayor's prioritization of public security will usher in greater repression. Raising the wages of police officers without concomitant increase in pay for all public employees gave the police an extraordinary privilege above others. The death of democracy and the rise of fascism are two sides of the same coin. Number two, there's an alarming trend of shouting out dissenting voices and other opinions by the media. Corporate media censorship is now at its highest with the silencing of Julian Assange and Seymour Hersh. In the same way, our local papers is very selective in what it wants to publish. It suppresses certain voices while amplifying others. To be present at the city council meetings and read about it in the papers the very next day, I am astonished at the differences it choose, what it chooses to exclude or include, not to mention a whole bunch of misinformation and half-truths seen in the country's media. Number three, if there have been, if you have been following global events, you might be struck by how much African voices have risen up against United States, constant lecturing to them, to them, Africans are standing up and will not tolerate being spoken down to. In the same way, at the last council session, I was outraged when a white woman had the temerity to lecture us of how to behave. Who gave her that right? And I do not need the mayor to apologize for me. Why don't you stand up for the rights of George Floyd, or the, or the ouster of the legitimately elected officials in Tennessee, or the four people of the African People's Socialist Party who were arrested in St. Petersburg, Florida for speaking up against the war? This hypocrisy is mind-boggling, and the same hypocrisy of the State Department is being exposed on a daily basis in the international arena. Americans should be more humble and spend less time telling others how to behave and more time correcting the disasters devastating our country. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to invite Susan Perry Cole to the podium.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, my name is Susan Perry Cole. First, I came today to again voice opposition on behalf of some Rocky Mount taxpayers to the city's possible investment in replacement of the Judicial Center building at an estimated cost of thirty million dollars. I have already mentioned in prior remarks before the city council that deteriorating U.S. economic outlook is a major reason for lack of taxpayer support for the city partially financing the Judicial Center replacement. Today, I want to emphasize that a rush to approve city financing of the Judicial Center replacement, coupled with runaway inflation, can only serve to widen the gap between the city's strategies to expand affordable housing opportunities and resources available to carry them out. Secondly, I want to express concern about a recent decision to increase the starting salary of Rocky Mount police officers to sixty thousand dollars. How can existing employees from other city departments maintain confidence that they are being paid a fair and reasonable wage when the thirty-six percent increase in higher salaries was granted only to police department personnel? Finally, I'm also disturbed by recent news reports indicating that the mayor intends to increase his enforcement of the rules of decorum against members of the city council, who may have, or some may have viewed as disruptive or out of order. Repromaning elected officials who dare to forcefully speak out and give voice to views of some marginalized city residents who for too long have been silenced is undemocratic and unprecedented. Thank you for the opportunity to share these comments today.
Thank you. I'd like to invite, uh, Joanne Jones to the podium.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Robinson, to the new city manager, haven't met him yet, to all of councilmen, to Chief Harold, to police, to all the other offices, the fire department, residents, staffs, everybody in the city of Rocky Mount, as well as residents. I'm Joanne Jitu-Jones. I reside at six oh one Atlantic Avenue, and I'm going to read to you what my request is. Again, good evening. I'd like to address vacant and abandoned lots, residential lots in the city of Rocky Mount, North Carolina. These lots are abandoned simply because these are particular of foreclosure laws during existence and a character being enforced. You can't abide, they can't sell it, some of this air property. So the property remains dilapidated and abandoned and rough and rugged, and it causes crime to continue in areas as such. In particular, on the corner of Grand Avenue and Atlantic Avenue, right in front of, right beside, right before my property, six oh one Atlantic Avenue, Rocky Mount, North Carolina, two-seven-eight-zero-one. The number one factually, the number one increase in generational wealth is land ownership. Ownership. It goes on and on and on. You all can attest to that. You can attest to that. On and on and on. Land will outlive everybody in this room today. So if you want to have something in life, have pride, take pride in it by property. I've been unfortunately unable to do that because this Edgecombe County said to me when I talked to the tax assessor's office that they can't sell me that land with the vacant, that is vacant because the property is that that's owned by heirs. The back taxes on that property is just a thousand and some dollars when I last checked. I want it. And I want it because I see cars come in and out, six or two hundred people come through that intersection while I keep my property clean and live reasonably and peacefully among my neighbors and my constituents in this city. I see them coming and create drive-throughs, and I see drug deals because it's unmanned. It's, it's unmanned, it's not maintained, and it breeds, it breeds pest. It breeds failure. We live three blocks from a wild, luxurious, beautiful event center, and twenty years ago, the year you all and us are here at Rocky Mount, North Carolina, the net income of fifty million dollars. Surely, can somebody top the Edgecombe County and tell them to loose these laws, create a law, create a order, create something where residents, I'm sure, residents and everybody else can come to their purchase. Thank you for listening.
I'd like to invite Adrian Pope onto the podium.
So I wanted to talk about crime in the city and specifically the reporting of the crimes. Um, so back on March twenty-sixth, there was an article in the Telegram that said five injured in three shootings in the city, and that was supposedly crimes that, or it was crimes that occurred on March twenty-fifth. But in that same article, it talked about the previous weekend of March eighteenth. There was also, it said, half a dozen people were arrested on misdemeanor charges after a ruckus there the previous weekend. The Telegram found out about that disturbance from outside of law enforcement circles. Okay, that is alarming. Um, so if we don't know what's going on with crime in our city, then how can we fix it? How can we properly address the problem? I know, I get up in the lines on the weekend, and I check the paper, and I check online, and try to see what happened, check the news, and uh, I knew particularly on the eighteenth, I did, and I didn't see anything there. I thought, oh, it's quite a weekend in the city. Well, turns out it wasn't. And I checked the MyRMT app, and nothing was on there. And so it's quite alarming that, for whatever reason, that information was not put on the app. And we spent a whole lot of money on that app for us not to be putting all the information in it. What was it, two hundred fifty thousand dollars? So either it was an oversight, or if it was censored, a lot of people are thinking that, that it's censored. I know it's embarrassing that we have a lot of, uh, brand-new businesses and things going downtown, especially around our event center, and if things are not going well with crime there yet, it's embarrassing. But if we censor these things, then what we're doing is not giving people the full picture, and we can't address these issues if we don't know about it, right? Uh, lots of surveys go out asking the citizens what they think, and if they don't have all the information about crime and what's going on, then all this information and feedback you get is meaningless, it's useless. And so I also am worried about, with those fights and shootings that happened, they were right in the parking lot, that our new housing project, housing development is going in. And it seems like it's the And it seems like it's the gorgeous, you know, holy grail trifecta of housing. It's got to be a good price, a good condition, a good location. But that's really a fraud if the location is not as great as we're making it out to be. Because I worry we're putting families in there that they think they're getting a great place. And if someone's coming home from a late night shift and they're on the weekend and a club is getting out and there's fights and shootings, they could get hurt. If you have shootings going on and a stray bullet goes in with the window and a family's living there, that's dangerous. So I worry about that. And so what I really want to see is the MyRMT app, every single incident being put up in there in a timely manner, all of the information, but nothing being censored. And also, another reason the Telegram didn't know about this is the city of Rocky Mount radios for the police traffic is scrambled. And so nobody can follow what's going on. It makes it, maybe it's a good reason, but it seems to me that if the fire department doesn't have their radio channel scrambled and the Nash County Sheriff doesn't and the Edgecombe County Sheriff doesn't, then why do we scramble ours if they can do an effective job of solving crimes?
Thank you. I'd like to invite Dr. Lisa Nelson-Robinson to the podium.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members and city manager. I did have some random notes, but given what we just heard, I have to change my, my notes. I am in defense of the city council members being able to speak loudly and passionately about their record and push back on any negative narratives, any misinformation, and tell the truth, truth to power, and not be shut down, not be censored. We saw how that worked out in Tennessee. I am not for people being censored. We need to hear the full story. I'm not for the thirty million dollar Judicial Center because I think the city needs to take a bigger view about why crime is caused. I think our police would prefer lesser of a raise if they had less work to do. And so if you get to the root cause of crime and address that with thirty million dollars, I think people would be much more happier. Having said that, I want to push back on the narrative we just heard about our downtown. Because I've lived in this town since nineteen ninety-three, practicing surgery at Voiceless Clinic. I love this town. I'm from New York City. I can tell you, I went to school at Yale University and there was more drugs flowing in the dorms at Yale than there ever were on the streets of New Haven. And you never heard about it. And I can guarantee there's more drugs flowing in the streets of Candlewood that you will never hear about. So I don't want the narrative that our downtown is some dangerous place that people have to hide from. Because I walked downtown any time of night. I have never had any problems. I'm proud of our downtown. I love what the young people are doing there. I love what the business people are doing there. And the narrative that the media and certain parties in this town like to portray about Rocky Mount being dangerous and that the Rocky Mount telegraph loves to portray is false. False. I'm not going to have it, I'm not going to stand for it. I'm going to call a lie as I see it. So yes, things happen. Things happen everywhere. It's just like Nashville. But guess what? Who had the lung organs transplanted at Duke? Who had their OR instruments washed in elevator fluid at Duke? So people, they can choose what they want to talk about. I want to talk about the positives. I want the city council to focus on solutions together and do not shut down people who speak truth falsely because censorship doesn't work. Thank you.
I'd like to invite Namtaz Chey.
Good evening, Mayor, city manager, council members, ladies and gentlemen. At the last city council, a councilman stood up to defend himself and his black colleagues after being accused of dereliction of duty by a member of the public. In the zealotry of his defense, he demonstrated confidence, eloquence, clarity of thought, and he spoke the truth. He followed the rules of free speech. His speech was free from vulgarity, obscenity, intent to defame or cause disorder, free from harassment and free from threats. His voice reached a crescendo when he outlined the assistance the member of the public had received from the city councils. Sure, he pounded his fist on the table, but that is allowed in the rules of free speech as long as nobody was harmed. He did all the right things, yet he was singled out for lack of decorum, lack of courtesy. He was accused of yelling and screaming, and his outburst, outburst, was considered rankerous. Why? The message is clear. You are black, you don't count. Sit down and shut up, and we'll teach you how to behave. This subtle colonialist mentality of power and dominance, aggression and oppression is evident in the curtailment of blind voting rights, expansion of the riot act, book bans and gerrymandering, et cetera, with many more to come. Racism, bigotry, and white supremacy have no reverse gear. It's indisputable that the lack of decorum and the lack of courtesy towards the city council and the residents of Rocky Mount were demonstrated when some council members attempted to sneak off to the state legislature to raise millions of dollars for the new Judicial Center. Millions of dollars to be placed on our backs as future taxes. Where is your decorum? Where is your courtesy? Do not pontificate from the Ivy Tower. As for yelling and screaming, rankerous outbursts, isn't that witnessed repeatedly on TV during illegal traffic stops, illegal home invasions by police officers, yelling and screaming, pulling out innocent drivers from their cars, women dragged out by the hair, exhibiting total lack of decorum and courtesy for citizens? That is a rankerous outburst. That's real yelling, that's real screaming. Did you see this behavior in the council member while he made his defense? Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to invite Darlene Spencer-Harris to the podium.
Good evening. Of course, I can speak out about the judicial system. The thirty million dollars, that wants to be invested into that, I'm totally against it. I won't go further into that because it has already been addressed by many of my constituents out here. The other thing I wanted to speak out was about the last council meeting when our councilman that was elected by the people felt it was necessary for him to speak out and speak the truth to the public because there has lies have been told. And for our mayor to print an apology, have an apology printed in the paper in regards to his behavior, well, his behavior was acceptable in my eyes because he told the truth. We don't need anyone to correct how we speak or how we feel. It's called freedom of speech. I do not need anybody, my mother is deceased. I don't need any white lady or white man to tell me what I'm able to think and how I should speak. Mr. Andre Knight, I will call him by name, Councilman Knight. He spoke the truth at our last council meeting. And I, I am in his defense totally. And if we don't have unity and we don't have inclusion, none of the goals that I'm trying to be accomplished will ever be reached. And with that being said, I'm done.
Thank you. I'd like to invite Crystal Anderson to the podium.
Good evening, everyone. I just came up here to say thanks to the Police Department and the Parks and Rec Department. This weekend, we had an event in Maryville Park, and it turned out very well. I mean, as I'm sitting here in the audience, I'm hearing a lot of things. I just want our city to just go in prayer and start praying about things that we have going on with our city because there's a lot of back and forth. There's a lot of black and white issues. But the last time I checked, we're all one. And if we continue to fight each other over differing opinions, then we're never getting where. Because it's, it's just sad. The last two years that I've been in the city and I've seen so much dithering and not much being done because we're so busy fighting each other about who said this, who said that. But we need to learn to sit down at the table and start talking to one another, start understanding where each one of us are coming from. Because my thing is, what I see in the city, a lot of it comes from what we see up front. And if you guys are bitter and attacking each other, then the city is going to continue to do the same thing. But I just came to thank the Parks and Rec, the Police Department, and everyone for coming together and showing us a very good time. There were seven churches that came together, and we walked around and we prayed for the city. And in Maryville Park, they're asking for a revival, a weeks-long revival, for our city to come together on one accord and unity, together for once.
Thank you. I'd like to invite Colonel Scansey to the podium.
Good evening. I say, I hate double-minded people. The last few minutes just left from this podium. Came here from Florida. I met, we're here in Tarboro, Alamo Pine Top. And she talking about coming together, but I talk about that later. Public comments. As a black man, I take offense to a white female responding to black men. I talk loud because I want you to hear me and because I say what I mean and mean what I say. I find it interesting that they can attack the council and nobody stop them. But when folks simply clap, they clap for something positive when the five chief spoke, it appears they're out of order. Really? If the media would do like I do and wait for the LA to put out a type of response, a lot of this mess wouldn't be going on. Telegram, fight crime, I look at that mess they put out. Do like I do, wait until a press release come out from the city or the police department, and a lot of this mess wouldn't be going on. But everybody was just trying to put it out there first. And then I got a problem with black folk sending mess to fight crime, and she just put anything out there. And, and, and the last thing I want to say, I find it interesting, like certain folk come to this podium talking about what, what they're really doing is trying to drive other folk against the council because it's things they want, like buy our people property. They can't get it, so they get mad and want everybody to be mad for the council. And the last time I checked, all y'all are wrong. I'm sixty years old. Couple of brothers right there, they're way younger than I am, more than enough to be, be my child. Teach them to school after my daughter. I don't know that much about daycare. But they are, everybody's wrong. And those that ain't wrong, you need to grow up. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to invite Cooper Blackwell to the podium.
Hello, everybody. I'm Cooper Blackwell, seven two zero, Stone Way, Parkdale, North Carolina, War Four. Thank you for having us today. It's important, very imperative, that we do protect the freedom of speech and that we stand behind equity and workers' pay, as well as stand behind leaders that are committed to serving our community and that have longstanding evidence of creating solutions that are community-based, community-led, that lead to sustainable infrastructure, sustainable systems, and, and improvements for people that have been disenfranchised for centuries. I think today, we are witnessing, and we are witnessing a moment of transition. And the city, as the center of it all, as we so claim to be, will have to prevail through a struggle. Martin Luther King Junior has a quote, and he says that change does not roll in on the wheels of inevitability, but comes through continuous struggle. So we cannot be afraid of change. We cannot be afraid of conversations that's going to better us as a community. And when you walked into this room today, you could cut the tension in the air with a butter knife because, and the silence speaks loudly. So it's imperative that we are paying attention to what's being said tonight and that the council, you all are being representative of the people and the concerns that the people have. Because the NAACP is here, if you don't. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to invite Troy Davis to the podium, please.
Good evening. To the city manager, Keith Rogers. That was a very vocal point. I had a conversation with the chief. I greatly appreciate that raise because hopefully it will allow us to fill some of those vacancies to the fire department. We hear you, we with you. And I also ask that you continue on and try to come up with some quick solutions for our pay raise that has been in the make for many, many years, as well as other things that's been in the work for many, many years. Today, I want to speak truth to power. It was said that the city has invested billions of dollars in me, and I want to clarify. First, thank you to the city for investing nine hundred thousand dollars in my mission to create clean, safe, and affordable housing, primarily in War One, where I was raised. Housing has always been a priority for me. I've shown that not by the word of mouth, but by my actions and my dollars. In 2011, while a sophomore at Winston-Salem State University, I began rehabbing homes in some of the worst parts of Rocky Mount when no one else was investing, including the city, even though housing has always been a priority of this council. For almost a quarter of a century, six years, and to my development initiatives, the city of Rocky Mount decided to invest in my efforts. As I started to rebuild my community, break by break, window by window, and door by door, three hundred thousand dollars for the Davis Loss, a dilapidated building with pigeons as the only tenants. Now provides twenty-two luxury walls, a restaurant, a shoe store owned by NBA player, and a future juice bar and fresh grocery store. Two hundred thousand dollars for Stone Way, which was a crime-infested and over eighty-seven, eighty percent boarded up with trees growing through the porches, now offers fifty-nine rehab units, creating clean, safe, and affordable housing. A hundred thousand dollars for East Grand Apartments, which all but two units were boarded up with rats and roaches. It is a hundred percent leased with eight hundred and twenty-five dollars a rent for two barons, one napaskas, and four units allocated for affordable housing. According to the 2023 fair market rate analysis by HUD, two barons in zip code two seven eight zero one should be at eight hundred and ninety dollars. And as you just heard, the rent for my two barons are way below. And while the rent for the Davis Loss ranges between nine forty-five and fifteen hundred dollars for all the luxury loss, we provide three affordable units, some paying as low as seven hundred dollars. So yes, I have received approximately ten percent funding from the city to add to over nine million dollars that I've invested out of my own pocket to do what the city couldn't do, create safe, clean, affordable, and luxury houses and businesses in Edgecombe County. You do the math on the return of investment. Yes, I did raise the rent. I raised the rent on the rats, the roaches, the trees, the pigeons, and crime because I always have, because affordable housing and rebuilding Rocky Mount has always been a priority.
Thank you. I'd like to invite Reverend Nehemiah Sturgess to the podium.
Good afternoon. When I was eighteen years old, boarding house college, Reverend Dr. Lawrence Samuel Carter, who was the dean of the Martin Luther King, entered the nomination chapel. Spoke to us one day and said, gentlemen, it's not enough to speak truth to power. You have to speak with power and truth. Truth is, in this current political climate, we are more concerned with wins and losses than solutions. We can't see good in our community because we conflate gripes and grievances. And yet, we have an opportunity to get it right, to right generational wrongs. Instead of griping, let's rally around challenging our legislature to restore our sheriff's authority to issue gun permits. Let's rally behind improving healthcare outcomes and affordable housing for all, better mental health provisions and food security. Let's support a sound public education system. We must not allow what we are doing now be the cause dea. We must not allow what we are doing now be the cause a dia. It must be the cause our veto, not the cause of the day, or the cause of our lives. Uh, I have been and always will be in support of the fire department here in Rocky Mountain, North Carolina. I want to say that I appreciate everything that they do. They are a part of, uh, our public safety system. Uh, I also appreciate the police department. I understand that we need to recruit, uh, other people, but not at the expense of, uh, the dignity of our other employees. Let us, uh, take another look at this. I'm not saying that we should not bring in new people. I'm not saying that we should not offer the sixty thousand dollars, but don't do it at the expense of these gentlemen here, these gentlemen, these women, and these men here. Because they mean as much to us as the police, as the trash people, as everyone who works and does a great job for this city. Because it takes more than the police to keep the city safe and clean. It takes a concerted effort by all. And so, let's be fair to all. Let's be fair to all. You're doing a good job, but sometimes we miss the mark. And like I said, um, don't be concerned about these gripes and these, you know, let's look at grievances, and if we're gonna look at grievances, let's make sure that we are looking for solutions. And I believe that we have the intellectual currency on this council to get that done, especially with our new, uh, city manager. Because truly, I say again, I invite you to church on Sunday at eleven because this is Mr. Rogers' neighborhood.
Found that perfectly. Thank you. I'd like to invite Bronson Williams to the podium.
I want to say good afternoon to the mayor and council. Uh, as I was adding up the days, today is day fifty for our city manager. Fifty days, this city manager's come in and helped to deal with vacancies in our police department. As we always heard, the situation in which Rome was not built in a day. We understand that this is budget season, so as the weeks unfold and months unfold, perhaps we will hear some of the things in which the city manager and the rest of the city staff is proposing for increases for employees. Just last year, the city council looked at a four-point-seven million-dollar comp plan for this city. Staff that has been in the city for a long time should know that this city council is about effort outcomes. Challenging things when department heads did not reflect our community. Challenging things when, uh, there were issues with employees. This council has a long history of being able. I don't think they're gonna stop now. I believe that the work has started by this manager, who's come in and looked at bold ideas on how do we fill these vacancies. I get it, education is important. How do we stop crime? First of all, we certainly gotta educate our children, be responsible parents. But when that fails, we understand what the outcome is for that as well. It must be prepared for those things. As we prepare for storms, as we prepare for rain, as we prepare for all of these things, we must be prepared. Sometimes the popular thing may not necessarily, uh, be the right thing to do. So you gotta make those tough decisions that despite what the popular conversation is about, what is the best thing for our community? How do we push the dial forward a little bit more? And as he said, not get caught up in a lot of these other things and issues. The reality is, when it comes to that judicial center, it is responsibility of this council to be sure that we have adequate space for our judicial center. And if we've outgrown it, it may not be the popular thing, but it may be the necessary thing. We have that as a convenience center. If, if, if this council decides they no longer wanna fund it, then assured the residents can go to Nashville and go to Tarboro, but it's not gonna stop the citations that go on in that, uh, situation, in, in that district court or, or, uh, evictions or whatever else they do, uh, with juvenile, uh, delinquencies and things that's happening in, in the judicial center. Mayor, I thank you for coming on the show last Thursday. We certainly appreciate you. As always do, I invite all city council members, uh, to join us from seven-thirty until nine on WSCR TV now, as we talk about things impacting our community where we don't deal with mess.
Thank you, sir. I'd like Mr. Jones to the podium. Consideration department. Okay. With that, we'll move on to item number nine, our agenda, which is consent agenda. Like to, uh, entertain a motion to approve consent agenda as written. All right, Councilman Knight, accepted by Councilman Joiner. Any need for discussion? Hearing none, all the voters please say aye.
Aye.
All votes like sign. Item carries, that brings aside a report of a public hearing. This public hearing is related to an application to the local government condition for approval of the installment purchase contract with fiscal year 2023 construction projects, Webster Bank National Association, three million, three-point-one-two-five million, fixed interest rate of three-point-nine-three-five percent, for a one-hundred-and-twenty-month term in the adoption of the resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of the installment financing agreement for construction projects. That includes the Denton Street Pool improvements of one-point-six-five million, Business Service Center improvements at one-point-one million, and warehouse improvements at three-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand. At this point in time, we'll open up the visa proceeding to the public government or public comment. Is there anyone here to speak on this matter today? Can I open the podium to, uh, speak to this particular item in public hearing? Seeing none, I oppose the public hearing and I'll look to the council to, uh, for a motion to adopt the resolution to adopt, authorize the finance department and or the city manager to execute any required documents for the financing. Motion made by Councilman Doctor, accepted by Councilman Joiner. Any need for discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, Councilman Harris.
Just a quick note, I wanna thank the finance department. This financial rate for ten years, a hundred and twenty months, is a very, very good rate for the city. And I wanna thank everyone involved in doing their due diligence and getting this rate that will save us money over some of the other rates that were in the rules. Just wanted to say a big thank you to the finance department.
Thank you, Councilman. Anyone else see discussion? Councilman Knight?
Yes, the city Denton Street Pool is on the agenda for financing. Do we know a time when that would be completed? Will it be ready this summer?
Councilman, I'm happy to follow up specifically with you after the meeting.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, all the voters please say aye.
Aye.
All votes like sign. Motion carries. No other business appeal for City Councilman Knight, I'll throw the media out.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilman Knight.
Thank you. Um, I just have a question. I understood that, um, former Fire Chief Cory Mercer had submitted a request to speak. Did you get that?
I think Mr. Jones, just, he, a lot of him couldn't come around. He just wasn't. He had to wait for the mayor to.
No, sir, something's, uh, okay.
No, no, I trust. Okay.
So, I'm sorry, Captain Mercer, I, uh, if you happen to, uh, chief, I'm sorry.
I think he's saying if you wanna speak, you're a lot of the problem.
Yeah, I will open it up for you.
Thank you. And Mr. Uh, Jones, I think.
Is there a call from Stacey here?
Yes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Councilman, and Mr. Manager. Um, I would like to first thank y'all for your leadership and the fine city that's been great for so many people for so many years, including myself. Um, I have such a smile, life is good, especially if retired, you should try it. Uh, last week, I heard the board announce that any other police officers that will be paid sixty thousand dollars a given salary, which also mean that every current officer will be paid that as much as well with a used salary. My humble estimation guess is that this would be a minimal of about eight hundred thousand dollars impact to the budget, there around. I would like to hear how we will sustain this without any other federal tax increase. There is much support from our brothers and sisters in Blue along with Chief Hassel, who's doing a fantastic job. They are very much deserving of this financial increase that may occur. So many concerns are not, that no one should not be getting an increase, but that a concern is that public safety operates at one, with, as one unit. It moves in unison, just like the left hand and the right hand in boxing. Every shooting, accident, homicide, suicide, murders, and assault, they both respond to. The majority of the time, the fire department ride first with the same dangers. The turnbowl was moved, used in a press conference, press release, when in fact, the disparity between the two salaries is that of being reckless. Now, I didn't call anybody reckless, and I didn't say the decision was reckless. I said the disparity between fire and police is reckless. The city was in the same position twenty years ago with disparity. In the midst of the pay study, just like the one that we are in right now, the salaries for public safety was brought up to parity within five percent. It was identified that each organization were equipped with tools to solve different problems in regard to public safety. In just fifty days, our city has regressed in public safety back to twenty years. We have gone back these twenty years and made a separation of fire ponies all over again. This separation in pay, again, is reckless. A line was drawn in the sand and it appeared that PD was chosen over fire. During the flood of the century, it was the fire department that saved this city. During potential riots in this plant, in the planning phase, the fire department along with the police department mitigated one of the most peaceful demonstrations in the state during a critical time in our nation. During COVID, fire laid a coop plan to ensure the city operations would not be disrupted for almost two years. And fire also manages the emergency, the emergency operation plan for the city and served as emergency management. Forty officers now represent twenty-five percent of the workforce, which is that is challenged. But this is the new norm and must be managed differently. Fire has been operating twenty-five percent shortage of workforce for almost five years, but we have implemented, uh, work schedules and policies to ensure that we can respond to calls for service. It appears that fire has been overlooked for being innovative and forward-thinking when it comes to life-saving measures or having a ready workforce. Firefighters are tired and overworked, but they're in a different mindset because we know that lives are at stake if we do not respond to calls. In closing, I'm calling on you to reprogram your mindset to consider public safety as one, not fire and police, and to address the equity in pay. I know the response would be pay study would be addressed in a new budget.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask Mr. Jones if you're here.
Good evening, Councilor, Mayor, uh, new city manager and council. I'm speaking on behalf of the environmental service, sanitation. Um, I'm speaking today because it seems like we're, our department's been overlooked. Um, we're not saying that with the fair six percent increase with, with the police department and it's not warranted, they may deserve it. But what, what about us? We, we have been two years in the making, haven't seen any changes in our department. We might have a few workers here and there, but we're still under managed. You know what I'm saying? We don't have the resources that we should have. But the pay should reflect what we do, a real important part of the city. We keep the city going just as much as the fire department and the police department. Does this strategy get picked up on people to look at like, look down on our job, but it's an important job? We do, we do a lot for this city. And some of the residents, they ask us every day, they appreciate us. But let the city council, mayor, and the new city manager reflect on that. Show us that you care about us. You know, that's, that's all we ask for. You know, we, you know, we can't get yesterday back, but you keep taking tomorrow from us. We have to show us something, show us something. And we are, we are, you know, it's just, it doesn't make sense to me and most of my constituents, my, my department. Let, let us, let us be the forefront and some, 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 show some kind of understanding for us. We went through a COVID situation two years ago, we wanted man. Out here working fifteen, sixteen hours a day just to provide something for the city. But let us get our pieces of pie. If you, you gotta, you slice it up, dice it up, the way that we can have hours, just don't worry about it. That's all I have to say on that, and I appreciate it, taking the time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This final intermitting vote should be going closer. I think you have some, Councilman Knight.
Oh, yes, Mayor, and I'd like to thank everyone for coming out, and, and the employees. There's been some, um, speculation going around in the community that, um, employees, city workers should not come to the council meeting. So I want the mayor and the city ma- manager to assure according to section, uh, sixteen dash one-four-two grievance, um, procedure or policy, um, there will be no retaliation, not saying that it would be. But, uh, we appreciate hearing the voices of our employees and we appreciate the hard work from the fire department, uh, police, sanitation, everybody. It takes all of us to make this city run. So I just don't want anyone to have any fear, uh, that it would be reprimand or retaliation. Um, they're told not to talk to councilmen, but if that's so, uh, I would hope that they will follow the chain of command. If that don't work, then please come back. So I just want to assure our employees of no retaliation or no, um, that they're, that they're coming here to voice their opinion. I just want to make that clear. And also, I think that, uh, with the number of employees that we have, uh, we should hear from, if not you, the mayor, our city manager, in reference to how we gonna move forward in addressing our employees who have come with courage and boldness today. It takes a lot for someone to come to a city council chamber and to address it in, uh, with decorum, respect of the mayor, the city manager, and this council, uh, with their, uh, with their concern. I think we owe them that. And if the mayor, if you cannot do it, if the city manager cannot do it, then someone other than me on this council can do it. Thank you.
Anyone serious speak? Councilman Joiner?
Certainly, um, want to curate the things. And I'm pretty sure that the mayor and city manager will speak to those items of how we plan to respond. Um, we value every department, be there every department in this city because if we don't work as individuals, we work as team, and our response should reflect that. And so I am thankful when I see you out there working, we out working in this city to make it work for everyone. So, I'd just like to thank you for being here. I know that on this beautiful day, there are other things that you could be doing. We wanna make sure that we pay you so you can do it.
Yes, uh, Councilman TJ Walker.
Um, thank you everyone for, for coming out and taking your time. Do we have anyone that can, uh, provide us with, uh, just a quick answer when the last time we executed approved, uh, pay plan study in the city of Rocky Mountain? Or does anyone have that knowledge firsthand?
That should come from staff. Talking to the finance team, we got HR, somebody will send a piece of note when the last time we commissioned the study, in fact, in the small town, we commissioned two.
I don't remember, twenty nineteen.
Did we get it?
I don't think we approved.
Did we get it to discuss? Did we review it? We talk about it frequently, but it's up to the staff to present to the council a plan to fund.
That, that's my question. Do we have anything to answer?
So you got your leadership here, Mr. Rogers?
Mayor, council, I would like to take the first opportunity because of the conversation this evening to say that I can't remember if it's day fifty. I, I haven't been counting like that because I've been enjoying every day of it. But first and foremost, I wanna say that it's my, uh, always my number one goal to make sure that the city of Rocky Mountain is a great place to work. And so that extends to every single department. And so what I will not do out of respect for the entire organization is entertain departments versus departments. So what we had recently is an opportunity because of vacancy savings in one department to move forward with a recommendation to ensure that we could fill, uh, the significant amount of vacancies from the organization that I have inherited. Uh, additionally, in regards to class and compensation, we know that a class and compensation study is underway. What I have also committed was this, this would not continue to be the type of report that sits on the shelf. We would come back with meaningful recommendations, and I would do everything within the resources available to us to implement those recommendations for the better of the workforce. So at this juncture tonight, I am not able to speak to the details of that, and it's not because of lack of knowledge, it is because of the respect for the workforce. These are our employees and we need to communicate with them effectively, not only just through chain of command, but to not try to litigate all of our various employee issues in a public forum. So what I can say is that I am committed to providing. So what I can say is that I am committed to providing a update regarding the class and compensation study that will have an impact to all of our employees and, and our entire workforce. And we will plan to make sure that they feel the value with the recommendations that come out of that study, which will be included in the budget that I propose to council next month.
Councilman Blackwell?
Thank you. And I think that's the appropriate response is that we have something to respond to from our uh, higher. And I don't mean that in a negative way. You have to be hired to be the CEO of Rocky Mountain by the board. Uh, I am also uh, desiring and I appreciate that uh, that response. That everyone's department will be reviewed with sincerity and with um, market, market accurate information. And that we have a budget that is able to be sustained without unnecessary tax increases. And that every member of the city of Rocky Mountain has a right to speak your voice. I'm really pleased today, not because you have taken a saying um, for anything other than saying, please consider me. I heard no disrespect from anyone today. And I appreciate that. The phone calls that we've received, I've received, um, have been interesting and heated. Uh, we have a new manager uh, who's getting his sea legs set. We have budgetary um, competition on projects, personnel and that they really buy for the vision of our city. Um, we're gonna chop this thing down and up. When we talked to manager Rogers, um, we also stated that we gotta figure out how you bring respect into every single corner of the city of Rocky Mountain. It wasn't just about police department. I wanna know what about the clerks? What about the people who answer the phones? What about every single member of this powerful city? I also wanna remind us uh, that we as a city council adopted several years ago a vision that had equity, inclusion and key shared prosperity at the very hallmark of everything we do. And we will be evaluated if those are just words on a paper or if it's real. So what I'm hoping is that when we go into budget discussion, we'll see that the city priorities are placed on building up the places that are thin, strengthening that which is already strong, but not playing games with people's lives. This is your life and it's the life of our city and we're all taking it seriously. And if nobody knew it before, we know it now. So thank you for every number and sure, I'm sure uh, manager Rogers, can you give your people some confidence that they will not be retaliated against us speaking out? Can you give some confidence to them?
We don't have an organization that retaliates against people that are exercising their rights.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Councilman Harris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and thank you, Mr. Rogers. We're glad you're on the team. We got a lot of challenges ahead of us. I think the people sitting up here are going to work very hard because I personally appreciate each and every employee who works for our great city. Unity sometimes is hard. We have differences of opinion, but we should be united in a common goal. And that common goal is to make Rocky Mountain proud and the best that we can do for our citizens and those visiting Rocky Mountain. I encourage our uh, citizens and some of our employees, of course, you'll be working. We will have a retreat next week in Durham. I wish you was here. But I hope it's going to be streamed live. I hope you can see how we are going to roll up our sleeves and make sure that what we are going to be doing over the two and a half days in Durham, we will make you proud. We got challenges. A lot of things that we're gonna have to look at and how we're going to plan over the next few years. But bottom line, Tom Harris has you. And please do not forget that I support each and every one of you. Thank you. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you. Anyone else? With that said, I want to also say thank you very much for everything that every employee at City of Rocky Mountain does. I certainly appreciate the fire department, the police department, sanitation, uh, and each and every member. I know that we've had a lot of conversation internally over the last week or so related to this matter and video others. And I can tell you this, that everybody in this, this council that I have spoken to has expressed a sincere desire to make sure that everybody is treated as um, opportunistically and equitably as possible. And that's certainly something that is the intent I know this council. I believe that it will be worked out through the budget process. I have all confidence in that. And I'm excited about where we are today. I do appreciate our new manager and the challenges that he's walked in facing. If, and I'll answer the question, if I had line control within the city of Rocky Mountain, uh, or the CEO, obviously all our policies would be taken care of. I have confidence that our manager and his affirmation that uh, he will administer the policies fairly, but actually will take place, not actually will take place. There's not a question in my mind. So I wanna thank everyone for coming tonight. I think it's been a good conversation. I appreciate everybody who spoke and the comments. I appreciate everybody's opinion, even those that were directed against me personally or my office. But I will say that um, you know, if everyone's right, I do appreciate it. With that, I'd like to entertain a motion to go in close session. Councilman, Councilman Joyner, is there a second? Okay. TJ, TJ Walker, okay. TJ Walker, permitting motion. Take it by Harris. Close session in full purpose of uh, economic development and personnel. All voters please say aye. All votes like sign. We're now in close session.